Access these desktops if they want to print their jobs off. So we just don't have printing across the board. We have to wait until that, save a lot of money on printing costs moving forward. The other big project again, the elementary school, gives you a little bit of a look at what was done. This is the, slowly in the entrance there, the windows that were there, they were re-shaped. Made it do some brickwork up above. This is now the inside in the demolition process, removing a bathroom, shifting things down. Very interesting looking at the walls that were built in the late nineteen hundreds and seeing it was inside of them. Luckily, we didn't find anything that we weren't hoping to find, and we're able to move pretty quickly. Again, that's the original sized window, and we scaled those down, bulletproof glass. So bulletproof, bulletproof resistant sheet rock on the outside there. Created a space where, again, you were cut off from getting, now when you get up in this area, I'm gonna take a lot of pictures out of the front, you are stopped before you get into the hallway where the kids are. And there's a window there, you can see that little window, you check in. Right after that window's a set of double doors, which you must be buzzed in to get through. Pricing on that, we have a grant from the state for fifty-six thousand, the board gave me an additional seventy thousand. We're somewhere about sixty-five thousand right now, and that's pretty much punchless done. On the main office, we had seventy thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars from the state, and we're at about seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars in overall. So we came in right under budget as well on that.
Quick question?
Please.
So the, if you come into the elementary school, is a set of stairs that goes down to the basement?
That door is now locked.
Okay.
Right.
Automatic open from the inside, or?
You can push from the inside, the crash button, push from the inside, but then it swings, closes, and locks. And one of you, you could have a little issue with people pegging that door. So, um, and I think, maybe the right way. So the old office was converted into, so this was Ms. Bergen's old office. We converted this into a teacher's room, there's the new copier. The teachers, where Carrie was up front, the reception area, we turned that into sort of their working area. Repurposed the office that was in the back as a guidance office, made a little hallway, made it look a little neater, put some cabinetry up. And again, that was all part of the front entrance that came in under budget. The mitigation for the floor for the nurses' room, the art room, and the genders closet all came in about nine thousand dollars. We were expecting that to be a little more, so we actually did what happened.
Are we asbestos free now?
We are asbestos free as far as four times ago. There was asbestos in the ceiling that covers some of the insulation that's up there. And so we're thinking about how we address that. We're taking this ceiling down and addressing what's above it.
Is this the only place in the building?
As far as we're aware, right here. That's it.
Thanks.
Sure.
Appreciate it. Lot done in the summer, and positive on asbestos versus fat. Where are you the minute? All right, thank you. I hope that's helpful for folks in the audience at home to get an idea of what goes on in summer. What's a little work, Matt, and this team is doing. Information items, next up, teacher negotiations, PPT. Ed and I met with, so I'm the alternate on the subcommittee, so there's two on each subcommittee. We can't have three because of the forum. So I'm the alternate. Brian is traveling for work, so I filled in. So Ed and I met with Health Trust and the Sunape Teachers Association rep to talk about some of the plans available. So for those of you who haven't been exposed to that, we deal with that at Hypotherm, deal with that as a town, different businesses. You meet with the rep, get an idea of these are the trends, these are the kinds of packages we're offering. Here's some pluses and minuses to each of them. We ask a lot of questions, goes back and forth. So we talked about the Health Trust, the subcommittee, and the SDA set dates for four meetings total. For, um, thank you. Set, you have to set out, so there's a letter to each other, we want to negotiate, and the Health Trust, and then you set dates for those, the collective bargaining, so there's four meetings to go towards that. So, um, with that, the petition warrant article that was in March around the request for negotiations in public, the, we consulted our attorney for guidance on that, and so I will read it verbatim, so that it's on public record. "The Board is not obligated to support the petition warrant article. Further, because the subject matter of the article proposes illegal conduct, therefore, it is unenforceable. In New Hampshire, collective bargaining negotiations are held during non-meeting executive session pursuant to RSA ninety-one dash A two I A. Typically, New Hampshire's right to know law, no, sorry, let me try it again. New Hampshire's right to know law, RSA ninety-one A, requires that all meetings must be open to the public. However, there's a specific exemption, exception to that rule that pertains to collective bargaining negotiations. RSA ninety-one A two I states that quote/unquote 'meeting shall not include quote 'strategy or negotiations with respect to collective bargaining,' end quote. This means that citizens cannot compel the governing body to hold a meeting in public session. The law is a direct result of Talbot versus Concord Union High School District, one fourteen, New Hampshire, five thirty-two, from nineteen seventy-four. University of New Hampshire Supreme Court held that, quote, 'the negotiation sessions between school board and union committees are not within the ambit of the right to know law,' end quote. The court so held because, quote, 'meaningful collective bargaining would be destroyed if full publicity were accorded at each step of the negotiations,' end quote. Further, the court noted that its holdings, no, sorry. Further, the court noted that its holding is predicated on the fact that negotiation sessions are, quote, 'served only to produce recommendations which are submitted to the board for final approval. The board's approval must be given in an open public meeting, thus protecting the public's right to know what contractual terms have been agreed upon by the negotiators,' end quote. Thus, for the purposes of Sunape, negotiations may only be conducted in public session if both the board and the union agree. The board cannot unilaterally determine that negotiations must be public, and the decision cannot be made on behalf of the union by the voters. In conversation with the SDA president and the SDA, they have no interest in this happening, nor does the school board, for the process seems to be very divisive for all involved." So, there was a bill in the House last year, I'm not quoting the lawyer anymore. There is a bill in the House, one three, one three, four, four, that had some momentum and some traction, that would have altered how negotiations go. That did not pass. There's early activity that that will be in some form brought back again. So the next negotiations might need to be handled very differently. But it did not pass. Our responsibility is to follow the rules, follow the law, hold people to the guidelines and the law. That's our role as a board. So we abide by the legal advice of our attorney, and I just thought it would be helpful, even though that was a lot to read, so you understand what, where we, what we have to behave within with our responsibilities as a school board. Thank you. SES facility update is the next topic. We, I can just keep going. Guys, hearing an awful lot of my voice tonight, sorry, guys.
You're doing well.
So they, I'm gonna be really frank, because everything is on public record and it's available. I gave a presentation to the town, thank you to John, Jan, John, others, Leslie, that were there, attendants. Pretty good crowd, I think thirty-five people or so is my estimate. As a board, our prior, our core responsibility is the safety and quality of education for the students and care for the staff, and going down that. Students are a priority. That's what we're tasked with, that's what you voted us for. There has been, to the best of my knowledge, looking through an awful lot of history, twenty-year conversation in town about addressing the other building. The last active voter participation in that was two thousand and six, with a warrant article for ten million, I think it was like seventy-two thousand dollars, ten million range. We shared all this, it's on the site. Everything that's drivers for why we are trying to move this forward as a subcommittee, we share. I can't see how it could be any more transparent, so if you're interested in this, to get caught up, it's all available. We'll be doing review and going forward with the next meetings. I don't have the nostalgia with the history for the multiple generations here. I'm a school board member, speaking for myself. It's my responsibility to address pages of ADA, American Disabilities Act, Homeland Recommendations Code, issues with a ninety-year-old school that needs new wiring, new air control. We have three classrooms that meet current standard, Department of Education. And Jim and I are both on the subcommittee, there's several people that are here that are active in that. We're trying to find, how do we address pages of non-compliance and concern? And the most, the best possible way for the students, we're constantly keeping an eye on taxpayers. So because of the long list, the challenges of the site, we have two options. A new wing on the school, and it needs a new road. Some of you are familiar with that. That's a big part of the equation. There'd be a new road that goes up in front of the fire and rescue station that comes around. So the plan would be, if that road can be built, we're gonna talk to the town to make sure that all this is feasible. The road will be built, that would include some parking. New wing of the school would be built, so that it's really just adding enough classrooms that are the right size. And then cafeteria that's functioning. If anyone wants to visit the school and see the cafeteria from ninety years ago, we're happy to share it with you. So we're just trying to meet the needs. What does, what do the students need? Considerations for the staff that are working in that environment, and then voters that have to consider. An insignificant investment in order to reach that. Everyone would move from the old school into the new school wing. The current building, which very strong, very vocal favor in the community of saving the building, the iconic school on the hill, that has to be stripped almost to bricks and redone, wired, plumbed, air, windows, everything. And then enveloping that is up-to-date safety, because that building, as much as changes have been made, and thank you for sharing those, there's much more we can do. It was built in a different time. That's a great concern for me, and I hear lots of people in the community voicing it, so I'm just trying to reflect it back to you. Big project, twenty-five million dollar range. That's the reality. So we started to talk about different ways to potentially pay for it. We'll share more as we get to more. You've got everything we had when we presented that. Option B, there's not a lot of land, there's not a lot of good places to put another school. If that doesn't work, for whatever reason, as we go through this process. The other option is the pretty field that gets the sun late in the day out in the behind of the school, but have an elementary school on it, and we have to build a new ball field next to it. In order to have that, if it's feasible, we would have a road up by the SAU to be the entrance. There'd be a gate in between, so in an emergency, there's two egress. That's our reality. None of us are thrilled to have to talk about twenty-five million dollars for option one, potentially thirty-five million dollars or more for option two. That is where we are, because this wasn't done before. This is our now. This is our responsibility to try to meet code, meet requirement, ADA, and provide a safe environment for the school. So that's four meetings, a lot of notes, a lot of conversations, a lot of back work, done in eight minutes. That's, that's the update. Maybe it's more than you wanted, but this is gonna affect all of us as taxpayers, and it's gonna affect sending schools, and it's, it's a decision of, well, this is the situation we're in, and as a community, we need to address it. We're responsible for educating our children, and this is where we are. So I hope that's a fair update. Any additions?
September tenth, five thirty.
Right. So next Monday, there's, Harriman is coming in, we're working with on designs, they've worked the design. So the subcommittee looked at piles of things, and what we chose to do is honor the work. Some people spent a decade working on these subcommittees. We elected to honor the work that had been done, and think of the taxpayer that all the money had been invested so far to keep that conversation appalled. When the service, Safety Services was building, the school board stepped back, and that was completed. After that, there was a whole process of the library. Now we're looking at the school. We elected to challenge anything that was been done, but it was an awful lot of work that had been considered, volunteered for, and paid for, so we decided to take that and move it forward. That's where we are. Anything else? I think that might have been really comprehensive on a hot evening, but I just think we should all be level set with understanding, because there's a big history to it. So we have two, two board members. I'm in my second year. Kim's in his first. We're coming at it and saying, okay, this is what we're tasked with, this is what we have to do. And we're trying to be judicious with tax dollars, but the numbers, the numbers are the numbers, and that's, that's where we're at. To follow it up with something a little bit easier to talk about and positive. Nature's Classroom trip, the yearly tradition, is set for September twenty-fourth to twenty-eighth. We're very appreciative of the staff, everybody involved, to make that the resounding yearly success that it is. Anything beyond?
Just been a great trip, just letting you know, I've given you change of policy, so I can approve that once I know the information.
Okay. And so for those that don't have students in the school, or it's been a while. The kids go away, there's bugs, there's sweatshirts, there's learning, there's fishing, there's fishing stories. It's just the way they go away, and it's been interesting to see how much that feeds some of the culture and the bonding within the classes. So if you do want to know more about it, it's, it's a really very positive yearly tradition.
How many years have we done it now? Or how many years have you done it?
I'm, yeah, twenty-two.
God bless you.
Yeah, it's been longer than that for the school, so is it thirty, thirty-five?
Well, I was gonna say, Kristen, we don't need to get into that. It's more than that, so. Ms. Parsons was not our type.
Yeah, new, new families learn really quickly, that's a pillar of culture and success of the school. So it's, it's a real positive. Nice to be associated with a school that does that kind of investment, and thank you for the road trip with a bunch of rascals. Next information item is summer staff hires. Do you wanna?
Just pretty self-explanatory again, just give me the information. We hired a few folks, just to replace folks that were leaving over the summer time. Not our teaching staff, but support staff. So you have Brianna in our SAU as administrative assistant to the special ed director, and Derek, who just actually moved to town, he's gonna be a paraprofessional at the elementary school.
One quick question, please.
Sure.
How are we doing for bus drivers? Every time I drive by any of the yards, they're always advertising, not hours, but they're advertising for.
We are too. We are too. We're doing, we're doing okay. I credit Brenda, I credit the crew, she's got a great crew, they're very dependable, very loyal to her. We've had a little bit of give and take with the town and some other employees, but we are short one right now, but we believe we have somebody in the wing who is looking to come and fill that position for us. So we're managing, but bus drivers across the state, across the country are at a premium.
Yeah. Why is that? Is it just?
Our economy's pretty good. It's tough to get the CDL and the rest of the training that goes with that, and the driving record. And I don't know, as you just said, Sharon, you've been on a bus with kids for twenty-two years, it's.
It's good, but we're a small town and short routes, right?
Right. Actually, our, our, we've been good with getting our bus drivers and holding on to them.
Yep.
Where other drivers are going to other districts, because they're, districts paying up to eight to ten thousand dollars of signing-on bonuses right now. Wow.
Yeah, there's things with Southern New Hampshire schools and Massachusetts schools having to delay start, and it's devastating. Everything else is ready to go, and they're worrying about bus drivers. So.
Second job?
I'm just curious, beyond the bus driver that is being worked out, with the pressure in the economy, they're just doing workforce development, training at Hypotherm, that perspective, well, again, I've mentioned this before, I think we have like sixty-plus openings right now, really good paid jobs. There's a challenge to get people in to receive those. Do we have other pressures? The bus driver would be an obvious one, with sign-on bonuses, limited number of folks with a certification, everything else. Are there any other potential hiring squeezes and pressures that we can just let the community know about that? Sort of on their radar, so it doesn't feel like a surprise?
Yeah, that's a very great timely question, because we actually looked and did a comparison for our custodians, I've had, the customer else, our food service people, compared to us in other districts around us, and we are grossly underpaying our people right now. And so we will have to take a look at that during budget process, and we'll review those comparisons and make some recommendations of what it is we want to do. We had trouble finding a custodian. We had a couple of nice applicants, but they were walking away from the drop at sixteen dollars an hour, we were starting at twelve.
So I'm sure, I knew it'd be coming in the budget cycle, but I just think it's good as that's starting up. The consideration has an incredible pressure on all levels of staff in any building with people working right now with the way the economy is, and it's not projected to do anything, it's gonna get a lot worse.
Sure.
Also, in this whole, I've talked about the substitute teachers.
Substitute teachers, that is.
Yeah. One where it's a lot, hasn't it?
Yes, that is well.
One is a strong economy.
So that would be an obvious one. Can you speak to, starting the year, we've got six days or whatever under our belt, how are you feeling? What's your barometer on?
I'm worried.
Yeah.
You know, so right now, we're good, but you know, in this whole, I have had this discussion about, you know, when we get into flu season, or, you know, you know, there's not a lot of people out there removing substitute teaching. Those who do it are high in demand, so they're gonna get called. So that's a worry. We'll talk about that, I just, I thought you did a good question, and that's one of the areas that could impact our education.
Kind of credentials for substitute.
Can they teach grade two previously?
Only at the elementary school.
No, no.
But it is, this is the first year I've been worried about having days where we might not be staffed. You know, and, and I've always felt it's been very positive, if we have, fortunately, our teacher attendance is very good.
Yep.
But I felt very good about, we don't have study halls when teachers are gone, like substitute, we have lesson planes, we can do that. But this is the first year I've worried where I might have to take classes and put down numerous classes in one place so you can supervise.
I still pay a seventy.
I don't think I'm gonna have to do that, but I'm worried that that could be a possibility.
I still pay a seventy dollars a day in the districts around us that are paying a hundred, no.
So it just, you know, this is what some of us are living in, small businesses, others in the audience, I'm assuming, are feeling some of the pressures with a greatly diminished workforce and some of the challenges, and there's not a big pool to pick from, so you pretty much, we're all stealing from each other, and there's not enough new coming in. So I just think it's our responsibility to talk about what, it's easy to think it's in Lebanon, or it's easy to think it's at RUBR, or the hospital, or Hypotherm, or Fuji, but I think it's a good to be aware of as a school district, and let the voters know, maybe we don't have any answers, but we're certainly gonna have to look at some of these things so we can be competitive and be upfront about some of the challenges that's putting on the core staff and administration, and hopefully not affecting the students adversely. So thank you for sharing.
One quick question, so how many substitute teachers do you have on your list typically?
It's in the double digits, however, not all of them can do certain positions.
Yep.
And again, if you get into, you know, somebody on our list might also be on the new core Claremont care service, so we might have ten. But on February fifth, you might be number seven before you get one to come in, and you have four open, so. They're in the double digits, I'd say.
Thank you.
But that's, but that's not enough.
Yeah. I just don't, I'm trying to work through the process of whether you can get them committed to you first.
Well, some of our better ones, quite frankly, when this has been recent, they really enjoy coming here, but they don't enjoy coming here so much that they get paid seventy-five dollars here and they get paid a hundred dollars somewhere else, but.
So Brian, we can, because if we know teachers are taking a professional day or they have an appointment, we can do that in advance. And our teachers are pretty good about letting us know that, but the, woke up with a cold, can't come in, you work, work on at five thirty, six o'clock in the morning, work. It's on the dice.
Yeah. Okay.
Questions, comments, sir? Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
I think it's important to get that out there, we'll circle back to that, see how you're doing. Next up in information items, we've got two more to go. New Hampshire School Breakfast Challenge recommendation, could you speak to that, please?
Sure, just unexpectedly, we received a letter late, early August, Sunape Elementary School efforts between October of last year, excuse me, October seventeen, October eighteen. They were looking to increase our New Hampshire School Breakfast Challenge, which was to raise our program of breakfast participation rate by twenty-five percent or more. With Bob and the folks down there, they raised it two hundred and thirteen percent. And so we were one of the top winners of the challenge, and Bob was recognized. He was also awarded three hundred and fifty-seven dollars, which he is to put into his food service program, or he spent back into his food service program. And he was recognized at the Laconia Middle School during a presentation, a statewide presentation of food service providers. Just passing along the information.
Thank you.
Our kids are good eaters.
And then the last one is the one that we added, the Outdoor Club.
Right, so yeah, this is this information, this trip, the Outdoor Club's been off for a long time. Got sent to me today, I'm gonna approve it. Sean does a great job working with Tom as far as identifying the kids that are going, making sure we know when it's safe, and who's going, chaperones, schedules, all that. In the past, you've given me permission to just give Sean the permission to go ahead and do that as he sees fits, and I'm just telling you, we're doing the same thing this year.
Yeah, this is an emotion and approval of this information. We're just carrying on something we do every year, but we wanted, you know, we just got this today, we wanted to share it with you. So it's Tom Coverdale and the overnight backpacking trips to the mountains, if you're not familiar with it, it's a great opportunity for the kids. The bedding of the school-vetted chaperone is, would be a common question, so that's part of that equation, we've been successful in the past. So we're supportive of that going forward.
Thank you.
We are on to manifest. We good?
Yeah.
Okay. Manifest. So just to review our process for our newest board member, who managed to make a very long motion, so we can have one for each of you as we round this out.
I can do this one.
So everyone wants to go first, as long as you read them through.
Fully.
For public record, we can do the AP manifest in one motion, and we can do the payroll manifest in another.
I make a motion to approve the AP manifest two thousand and eighteen dash twenty-four, two thousand and eighteen dash twenty-five, that sufficient?
Yes.
Two thousand and eighteen dash twenty-six, two thousand and eighteen dash twenty-seven, two thousand and eighteen dash twenty-seven point one, two thousand and eighteen dash twenty-eight, two thousand and nineteen dash oh one, two thousand and nineteen dash oh two, two thousand and nineteen dash oh three, and two thousand and nineteen dash oh four, as presented.
I will second Brian's motion.
Any discussion? Maybe just inform the community, so we have to have signatures, so we stop by, so one of the beyond reading packets, reading, going to trainings and discussions. Some of us more actively than other, exchanging emails with the community, talking to people. We go down and sign off, so the, all of these are laid out and lined out in detail, and we sit down and read through them, ask questions if we have them, and then we sign off, so that if you didn't know that, that's how that works. No other discussion? Motion by Brian, seconded by Scott, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion for AP manifest passes, thank you very much.
I'll make a motion for the following payroll manifests, two thousand and eighteen dash twenty-four, two thousand and eighteen dash twenty-five, two thousand and eighteen dash twenty-six, two thousand and eighteen dash twenty-six point one, two thousand and eighteen dash point seven, two thousand and eighteen dash twenty-seven point one, two thousand and nineteen one, two thousand and nineteen two, two thousand and nineteen three, and two thousand and nineteen four.
Second.
Discussion, questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Payroll manifest, motion passes, unanimous. Next up, public forum. Three minutes, fifteen minutes total?
The Board of Selectmen has put their packet that they receive online, and I was wondering if the school board would be willing to do the same. Kind of very, very helpful, instead of, you know, it's information that the public could access ahead of time and be informed. Like to request that. I'd like to request that they, that the school board do it as well. And I'd like to also request a copy of that letter that you, that your, the lawyer wrote about the open negotiations, I'd be curious to, to read that again.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Public comment, number two, Katie?
First of all, thank you so much for presenting so much information so thoroughly, it was really interesting to hear. So, I'm the president of the SUNapee Teachers Association, my name is Katie Flint, and the SDA agrees with the school board that the upcoming teacher negotiation should be conducted in a private setting with the goal of creating a fair contract for teachers and one that would meet the approval of our community.
Thank you. Rules say one shot, but I will hear what you.
Thank you, I, I had it down here, but I forgot to ask it. I was wondering if the school board had hired a negotiator for their portion of negotiations. When I took a course on negotiations, they said that was the one takeaway from that meeting, was that both sides should have professional negotiators.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments? Seeing none, close the public forum. Agenda items for next meeting, I'm gonna take you up in your offer for head count, hoping that, that you're still smiling when you give the actual number, we'd love to hear that go up. We'll give an update on the subcommittee on the SCS. Again, the next meeting is a, not a school board meeting, it's a subcommittee meeting, five thirty in the library, next Monday on the town. So, we'll update you on that, and if anything else comes that we learn that we can share or would like to do so. There'll be an update on negotiations, that process, and, um, we'll have it sometime. No, that's a month ahead, I'm sorry. Well, if we have a month, then we would give it to you, we, it's the next month, so that's gonna be, um, one month after we'll have an update. Um.
Second readings?
Yeah, second readings. Um, I'm open to anything else you guys can think of that I, I missed.
Is there anything curriculum related that?
Um, so I'll start to, I'll start to put together some presentations for you folks at the next meeting if you'd like.
Yeah, those are always a highlight.
Yep. Anything strike your fancy?
Uh, maybe the community art, is that gonna be too?
It just.
Early?
I was gonna say, those guys were just in last year in the, in May, I believe, they were, and those were the two, the guys, Scott. So, I'll see if we can do maybe some nursing, family consumer science, if we have that come in. I think athletics hasn't been through in a while. Um, some elementary school, I'll talk to Jerry, we'll see what we got going on. Sean, you got an idea?
I was thinking, if you, um, I don't know if this is a force, can we maybe do the personal fitness with the?
Yeah, maybe, maybe the phys ed, maybe phys ed will help, that'd be.
Does that help?
Yep.
Maybe if we can do that K-12.
That we can do, bring Bonnie in as well. There you go.
That'd be great.
Sounds good. Um, so, that brings us to a request to go into non-public session for discussion of matters covered under RSA ninety-one A three. So, I need a motion that you read that to do the motion properly.
I make a motion, I'm sorry, I move that this board go into non-public session to act upon a matters or matters referenced in the following provisions of RSA ninety-one dash A three two subsection C, matters which if discussed in public would likely, likely affect adversely the reputation of any, sorry, let me start that again. Matters which if discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the body or agency itself unless such person requests an open meeting.
Do I have a second? You don't have to repeat that.
Do you have a second?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, clarity for the, for the public, we're gonna move to non-public, we're gonna close the meeting in non-public, have a form to fill out, so that it's the topic and who's present, we do roll call, but we're gonna close from there, so this ends the, um.
You needed to roll call with them, man.
I'm sorry.
Outside, outside.
Hang on. I got it, I'm catching up here.
Yeah, you have a motion by Brian, seconded by Scott, Ben Ringus.
Let me do my homework here.
Sorry.
Thank you for the notch. Second one, I guess. It's, man, so the public portion of the meeting closes at seven fifty. We really appreciate seeing.
Sorry.
So, Brian, Earl, aye?
Yes.
Scott, yes?
Yes, and Jesse Tyler, yes, so we have three for forum. So, thanks for everybody's time, a warm night. We'll hopefully see most of you on.